So we're back on, again, just so Natalie has an easier time doing the minutes here. So it sounds like for adult services, M H I D, drug and alcohol, C Y S, and and aging, we're going to wait to see what the state does. The state does something, we would then react to it. For Veterans Affairs, there have been no furloughs, so we're keeping them at where they are. They've actually seen a similar level or a tick up in terms of services that they're delivering, so they're good there. Adult Services as well. But Transportation, you'd run some more numbers and some more options for us to potentially make some other additional decisions for furloughs for that. So that may be coming prior to the state announcing their budget.
Yeah, and like you said, Veterans Affairs is primary, it's almost 100% funded by General Fund, so there's really no, he has a, he had a really small grant that we encouraged him to get, and he got those funds to be able to offset his budget, but primarily right now, we're paying almost 100% of the cost within Veterans Affairs. But again, I think if we look at Transportation, that would be the fund to look at. And again, the 2020 budget, we had no contribution from the General Fund going to Transportation because of the increase in the rates. And so based on that and what we were projecting at that time to be the amount of funds that would be coming through based on trip volume, they weren't going to need that. But obviously, now we're going to have to offset on the expense side to be able to make that whole.
Okay. Mark, Margaret, Steve?
It makes sense to me.
Yeah, I, the concern I have, and thankfully, we're going to get a little bit of notice, but the concern I have is just in very round numbers, if the state of Pennsylvania decides that one of the ways to balance the budget is to remove about a billion dollars of funding, direct funding to the counties, and it's vaguely based on population, and Center County is like a percent and a half or so of the population of Pennsylvania, our share of a billion dollars would be 15 million. That would be a very large, very significant cut. I mean, even if you say, well, what if it's a half a billion they cut? We could be looking at seven, seven and a half million dollars of reduced funding in Human Services. So we need to pay very close attention to that.
Mike, my only, my only comment to that, and Mark, is just remember that there are the programs we want to fund, the programs we need to fund to our ability, and the ones we must fund no matter what. So just as we move forward, I mean, it may well be that we're not doing all the things that we used to do based on the amount of money that we're given, because a lot of these programs are essentially state mandated programs. And the reason that they're mandated is because they pay for the vast majority of them. When they, when they simply don't pay for the vast majority, you know, we can't tax enough to catch up. So that's my, that's my reminder here.
It's a fair, fair point, Stephen. And one of the things that we can think about is we're on pace to have several hundred thousand dollars of block grant money available. That's the retained earnings that we can carry over into the next fiscal year. And I think it would be wise for us as we get closer and start to hear more percolating of the state budget conversations, to potentially see if they're willing to allow us not to, because the stipulation on that fund is we can only use it for new programs and new services. But I think a wise thing that they could do would be to say, we're going to give you a reprieve from that, and you can potentially use that to fund other programs. And it could be those need to fund or would like to fund potentially. But I think there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a way that we can have that conversation going forward, because that could help us all out tremendously.
Good, good point.
Margaret, anything from you on the Human Service?
No, I think you've covered it.
Okay, okay. Okay, Tom, I think we'll be, move over to our next area there on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, so the next, again, this is the third largest area outside of the real estate tax and the grant from state and federal grant revenue is the fees, commissions, and fines. Again, this number in the 2020 budget was budgeted at about 9.2 million. In 2019, the number was 10 million. Some of the major things that run through this, the 911 fees that pretty much fund the 911 department, they run through here, and that's two plus million dollars. The fees that are collected in a lot of the court-related offices, probation, Recorder of Deeds, Register of Wills, pro bono tary, tax claim, a lot of the funds that they collect, the fees and commissions run through here. Central booking runs through here, the prison commissary funds run through here. Again, the commissions that are collected by, again, all those departments that I talked about. And so if we look at last year to this year through March, we had collected about one, we've collected about 1.8 million so far. Last year was 2.4 million. But again, some of that are, there's reasons why. So if we look at 19, for instance, we had the interconnectivity fees that Dale was collecting, and it's kind of a, like a one-time pass-through type deal where those revenues, those, it's almost like a grant, but they consider it a fee. And those funds come through, and then they're tied to an expense. And so there was $232,000 more that came through in 19 than in 20. So that's, that's a big piece of it. So if you take that off of the $530,000, another piece was the tax claim fees and commissions have not been posted yet for March. I talked with Joyce, she's going to be working on that. That'll probably be about $75,000. That's going to get posted into 20, so that'll bump that number up by 75 grand. And then the last thing, and again, I'll follow up with probation on this, but they have, they have a supervision fee revenue line item. And always in the past, there's always an A C H from the state that flows into there. It's a significant dollar amount. In the past several years, those two, there's two A C Hs, one in March, April-ish, and it's about 160,000, and about another 150, 160,000 usually later in the summer that comes through. So that hasn't hit yet. So I'll touch base with, with Deb Reed in the probation department and see what's going on there. But that 160 plus the 75, which is about 230, plus the other 230 in interconnectivity, that's about 460 of the 530. So if you look at all things equal with the other things, we're down about $70,000 so far right now at this point through the end of March. Again, when we run the April numbers, we're going to see a much greater impact. And there, again, there's some things that camouflage that to a degree, too, because for instance, the commissions that the treasurer collecting through 20 are based on a higher percentage. She's earning a better commission than she did last year. So that actually put those fees and revenues up. Some offices are still really busy. Joe, for instance, in the Recorder of Deeds, he's still busy. Now, it's obviously with the housing stuff slowing down, that's going to impact him. There's going to, there's still activity going on in Pro bono Terry's office in some of the other offices, like the Register of Wills, probation. But again, it's going to be slowed because of foot traffic, because of limited office hours. And so the question's going to be, is going to be when things do open back up, when we're able to open the county offices back up, will we have this massive flow of additional revenue coming in, or will that revenue just be lost and we won't see it? That's what I don't know with a lot of these things. So they're trying to push through things as much as they can right now based on the limitations. But again, when everything opens back up, will, for instance, in the Register of Wills office, is she going to get all this, you know, all this marriage stuff come through, because people are going to start having their weddings? You know, with Pro bono Terry, they're going to have a lot of activity come through. But I'm anticipating, obviously, there's going to be an impact. And obviously, we look at the commission for the hotel tax, and we've already talked about that, reducing that down to 85,000. So that would impact this line item right there, because that's where the commission for that is. And then obviously, it's going to impact, again, the, the court offices. And again, like for instance, probation. Again, if people are making their probation payments to go to, these fund many, many different departments. So probation's kind of like the, the bank collector. They collect the funds and they distribute it to the district attorney, to court admin, all these different departments. So all those different court-related offices, based on that, could be impacted pretty dramatically. If obviously people have lost their jobs, they can't make their payments for probation. And so probation will probably, will work with them. They always put them on payment plans and extend them out. But if they were paying X amount per month, that number's either going to go down or they're not going to be able to make payments till they're able to get back on their feet again. So that's where I think we're going to feel some of the pain on the fees and commission side is based on those different departments and kind of looking at, again, probation and all the different departments they collect funds for.
So Tom, are you able to separate out in any way the, the operations that would more than likely, once things, once the restrictions start to ease, would come back online and produce revenue and maybe even produce more because they're sort of in a holding pattern? I'm thinking of Pro bono Terry or Joe's office, where there might be some offices where that would not happen, where there would still, so I mean, you know, I think a more granular detail would be helpful, so we would be able to anticipate and track that. So I, you talked about them, but I don't know if there's any way to set that up as in, with any numbers behind them.
Yeah, we can do that. So again, for this, I was just trying to turn this around on a high level and just kind of put it into these buckets right now. But what we can do is I can take that information and we can break it into more subcategories and kind of really kind of, really kind of break it down on more detailed level so that you're able to kind of see, again, like you said, these different departments, we might see an abundance of, again, they open up the housing market and all these, you know, Joe's going to get busy. But other departments, again, like probation and all the different departments that are touched by them, I think that's going to be a trickle effect, and we're going to feel that in 20. I don't think that, you know, again, you can't get blood from a rock, and that's what's going to happen in some of those in that department. And so I feel that that's going to, and so we could look at what the impact's going to be within those particular, where they, where they collect money for and the impact that that would be based on not collecting at that rate. And, you know, we could say, okay, we think you're going to collect at 70% of what you thought. What's that, what's that impact going to be? How much lost revenue is that going to be? But in some of these other departments, they may, again, have a boon of activity come through, and there may not be much of an impact. But again, there is going to be some impact, obviously, to this $9 million. And so again, outside of the General Fund real estate tax revenue, this is the net, this is the other account that we really kind of, or category that we really kind of need to focus on and really kind of drill down and see that impact. And it is kind, I, it's, it is a challenge, because again, those, those fees come in and again, they offset, they offset our expenditures. But, you know, some of these departments are collecting a lot more state funds than they are county funds. So the state, again, to Mark's point, is going to be impacted greater than anybody. So for instance, like the M D J offices, when they collect a $100 speeding ticket, very little bit of that comes to the county. The vast majority of that goes to the state. And so that's where that impact's going to be. But again, we've mitigated some of these impacts in these particular departments. If we look at them department by department, by some of the furloughs that you've done at this point, which will reduce expenditures in some of those offices right now to offset some of the reduced revenue that they're going to have at this point. But, um, yeah, we can, what we can do is, what I can do is start to take that information within this particular category, fees, commissions, and fines, and break it down into a much greater micro level for you guys to be able to look at. I mean, I, I have every, I have every account in every department for that that makes up that 9.2 million dollars. You know, I can show you line item by line. So we could break it down to that level, really, and look at that if we wanted to, and kind of put it into categories of where we think we're not going to rebound from or where we might pick up. So if that would be helpful.
Any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, this is Mark here. I, I think both Mike and Tom are correct. We might have maybe three different categories of fees. One category would be things like Register of Wills, Recorder of Deeds, where hopefully, once things open back up again, there'll be a lot of backlog transactions, a lot of backlog paperwork. And maybe they might see a relatively small revenue decrease in fees of maybe like 5% or something. And then we may have other departments like Pro bono Terry where some of it's backlog, but some of it may never end up happening. Maybe, maybe they're looking at, I don't know, 10 or 20% reduction in fees. And then we're going to have departments, probation is the example we're talking about now, where the revenue decline could be pretty significant. I don't know what percentage we want to use on that, but I think there's going to be fees that we're just not going to see, we're not going to recapture. They weren't delayed, they just won't happen.
Okay, in terms of, you know, timing of this, with the restriction or the stay-at-home orders going through May 8th, there's, there's, there's time to be able to track that and compile it. So there's no rush on that, but I think that, that would be more helpful as we look at longer-term discussions with that. And we know for some, probation collects the money, gives it all to the state, and the state gives them back half of it for some, some line items. So we don't even know if that would continue or if they would hold it for longer. So again, that would be more of the later on down the road, tracking that and seeing, seeing what that looks like. Okay. All right, any other comments on that with the fees and commissions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Margaret?
I'm good.
All right, we'll head into the interest line item then.
Okay, um, interest is basically was going to be impacted just based on the, the interest rates going down. And so we kind of knew that when we were doing the 20 budget. We actually had quite an increase in 19 in the interest rate that we were collecting in the money market account. And so we, we did quite well. And so we budgeted in 2019, $657,000 in interest, and we actually almost came in right around that number. So we were about dead on with what we had calculated and where we came in at. For the 20 budget, we had a reduction of almost $140,000 in interest, because again, we knew with the Fed dropping their rates that that would trickle down and impact the bank rates. And so we had budgeted $520,000. So if you look at where we're at this year so far, we had $111,572 in interest compared to $141,304 last year. So that makes sense based on that. I think we're going to see a greater impact of the interest rates. Obviously, they're going to go down. So I looked at the money market, insured money market account that Colleen has. And for the month of March, we got $24,000 worth of interest on about $11 million. So we're still earning a very decent interest rate within that account. I would anticipate that that number is going to start to drop off, but hopefully it doesn't immediately, and we get to capture the upside here with all this cash that's coming in right now. Because what will happen is, again, all this real estate tax revenue that's coming in right now, that we're getting for the General Fund real estate tax is going to be deposited into that insured money market account so that we can capture as much interest as we can off of that account. But again, there are other multiple accounts that flow in there that we are in interest on besides the money market account that combined to total that total amount there. But again, so far right now, you know, we're kind of on pace with budget right now. But again, it will really depend on, because the Fed reducing the rate down to almost nothing is going to really impact those savings rates that we're going to get here. So time, time will tell. Again, Rich had good working relationships with those banks, and so he was able to kind of push them to be able to give him a good rate and kind of keep that rate in hold. And I remember before he left, he was trying to make sure that they could keep that rate in place. I think it was over 2% at that point. I have not talked to Colleen to see exactly where the rate's at right now. But again, that was $24,000 on about $11 million in that, in that account for the month of March. So obviously, if we have reduction in the money that comes in via grant revenue or the real estate tax revenue or fees and commissions, even if some of this stuff is passed through money, obviously, that's going to impact some of our interest numbers, too, outside of just the interest rate. If we have less dollars flowing through, we will, we'll see that impact there. But for many, many years, that interest number was not significant. So we've been fortunate in last year's budget and in this year's budget to be able to pick up, like I said, close to half a million dollars in interest.
Any recommendations at this point about where we should reduce that to? It's obviously not going to be that high. It may be a similar approach with the hotel tax, where we don't take it to worst-case scenario, but maybe we find a middle road. But would there be recommendation, Tom, or thoughts from the board on how we do that?
I think you could reduce it down a certain percentage. So we had the 520,000 in there. We could probably, again, reduce that number down probably, I don't know, maybe 15%, and that might be fairly accurate. I think that, again, I can converse with Colleen to kind of see if she has a feel for where she thinks things might head, or if she's had any conversations. It's kind of one of those things where you don't want to stir up the hornet's nest. So as far as going in and asking too many questions with the bank, if, if you have a good rate right now, just kind of let it be at that point. But I can talk with her. But again, the months of April, May, and June, if the, if the rate would stay fairly close to where it's at right now, we'd be fine. So it's just really going to depend on that. But I think if we took it down 15%, that might be, you know, reasonable. I don't know what your thoughts are.
Any thoughts, everybody, anybody?
Well, I think definitely check in with Colleen. But yeah, I would say maybe a reduction of 15 to 20% right now based on data.
You okay with that, Steve, 15%?
That's fine. That might be a little light, but it doesn't matter. That's fine.
Okay, Margaret, you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm sorry, heading into reimbursements then, Tom?
Yeah, so the reimbursements, the, the main reimbursement that we get is for the, for the out-of-county prisoners that we get from the other counties. And then we also have some payroll reimbursements. The Conservation District pays us back for quite a bit of their salaries and benefits. That number was budgeted around $400,000. And then we also receive some other reimbursements from some of the court-related offices. So those reimbursement totals in this 2020 budget were $3 million, a little over $3 million. And for the 2019 budget, that number was $3.7 million. And so far through March, we're actually ahead of schedule. We collected $756,684,000 last year, so we have about $72,000 more. If you remember, in the 2019 budget, we had budgeted quite a bit of out-of-county revenue, plus the state revenue for state prisoners for that program that never materialized for Chris's office. And so that's why the reimbursement budgeted number was almost 3.7 compared to three, a little over $3 million. And as you know, the population counts at the prison have been pretty good. He has trended higher through the first several months of 20 as compared to 2019. So therefore, that's kind of the majority of the reason why we're up by the $72,000 at this point now. Obviously, the furloughs maybe would have a minimal impact on some of these reimbursements, depending on how long that they, they would transpire. But the, the main thing that's going to really kind of drive whether this is going to hit or not is going to be the out-of-county inmate revenue. And just kind of looking at that for the remainder of the year. So I don't know if the COVID-19 will have a tremendous impact on that or not. He's been able to keep his numbers pretty steady. So any questions?
Any questions for Tom? So would we be in agreement for right now to hold that steady, the reimbursements, not to do any changes there?
I'm fine.
Are you okay, Mark, with that?
We might have lost them.
No, he's there.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now, yep.
Okay, good. Sorry, my screen's kind of frozen, and I, I can't, I can't get back to the main screen. But I will say, the warden and his staff have been doing a fabulous job at the correctional facility. But I think we might have to look at a bit of a reduction on tenant inmates with crime rates of at least temporarily dropping. And other counties obviously experiencing the same situation that we're about to. I, I think we might have to drop that revenue line item by something noticeable.
It's a good point, Mark, good point. Are we able to get from Chris? Basically, if we, if he would take out, we typically get a, get a, I guess, a, we get more out-of-county inmates throughout the year. Basically, they keep, they keep getting dropped off at our facility. But if he could basically take out throughout the whole year, what it would look like if we would start to dwindle. So basically, if, if they're sending us, if they used to send us 20 a month, and they're only sending us five now, at what point will we basically, where will we be December 31st? There's a more eloquent way to say that, but is that, does that make sense in terms of, yeah, oh, no?
So I just, a couple of things about this. I, I almost think that we need to sit down and really reevaluate the whole correctional facility budget, because not only do we know that he's got fewer tenant county inmates coming in, he may have some lower expenditures because he's got fewer incarcerated individuals at the facility. So there may be some adjustment there. But the big thing to remember is we've not negotiated the prime care contract yet, and we know that the amount of money that we budgeted is most likely going to be several hundreds of thousands of dollars less than what the budget, the contract will actually be. So I think there's some interplay here between revenue coming in and what its expenditures might look like, and then the prime care contract. So that's one place where really sitting down and going through it line by line might be very valuable.
Just to remind everybody, there's also an economy of scale in those, in those pods that we have to be mindful of. You know, you don't want to have five people in a pod. You want to have 55 people in a pod. I mean, that's, that's always been the math. And when we look at these tenant inmates, particularly at $65 apiece, that's really significantly below what our true cost per inmate would be. You know, all, all things being equal. So we have to make sure that we're being very judicious in our placement and our selection of inmates to make sure that it's not costing us money to house them. It becomes an asset rather than a, you know, a liability.
Yeah, and I will say, again, his numbers, we have budgeted 90, 90 out-of-county inmates on average per month. And he's been beating those numbers for the first couple of months, which is not typical. Typically, like, um, Mike had talked about, we start out at the beginning of the year, you know, 65, 70 inmates. And then they would bump up and he might be running over 100, 110 in the boon months to be able to make the, uh, gross that average up to get it close to that number that he would typically budget. So, um, the, it is, I was surprised how high his numbers have been for the first couple of months. It's been a good surprise.
So the prime care contract, we, we don't, don't have an agreement on it, but there was a stipulation in the contract where if the inmates would fall below, um, I think it was 220, that we would get a credit back. It was some number, 24220. And, um, so we're obviously, you know, with 180 inmates, I think we're at, or 170. We're obviously going to get a fairly large credit, uh, with that, but, uh, they may be doing more work. So just in terms of where that contract stands, Margaret, had, I would assume that they put that on the back burner for now. Is there, but is there any, is there any movement? Are we just going to go month to month with the current contract for now?
So, um, we are currently in the month to month scenario. Chris did mention the fact that the census is below what the threshold, uh, is supposed to be and for us to get a credit. But I think that there's not been a lot of discussion about this, given that the COVID-19 situation has really consumed, uh, dominated the conversation. So I will check back with Chris today and find out what Chris is. I can do that right away.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I, and I will say, I mean, we've, we've, we've talked with them about a number of different issues that we're all aware of, uh, via prison board about requests they've made. I will say probably of any, of any department within county government that I can think of, the correctional facility will probably be the one that is the most volatile in terms of potential for additional, uh, cases there. In terms of, uh, Steve mentioned, we, the thinking has always been maximize the amount of individuals within his pod. Now with COVID-19, they're actually made, the thinking is actually to not have as many individuals in one location. So that's going to be, that's just going to be constantly, uh, influx. But if we can get as much baseline numbers or as much of an understanding about how that's going to look. Uh, but, um, I think it would be, basically from Chris, it would basically be a projection of out of county inmates throughout the rest of the year. I think that's what it would look like because, um, some of them are going to max out. Some of them are going to be released and, uh, we're probably not going to see the, the type of, um, sending counties keeping, sending us. Maybe, maybe they would. Maybe Huntington and Schuylkill would say, no, you're going to keep getting folks because what we're going to do at our facility is we're going to relieve the pressure at our facility. And we're going to send you actually some of our additional, uh, ones. So I'm thinking out loud, but maybe, um, you know, maybe that might occur. But again, we've got to balance that and make, making sure that we're, we're being, uh, judicious with that.
So Mike, I did receive an email from, um, Chris just on Friday. We've not talked about this directly, but he forwarded an email to me from Tom Weber at Prime Care and they're requesting that under the current circumstances, that we would not mandate Prime Care to pay center county to reverse per diem. So this needs more conversation, but I think Chris is thinking that they have put in a lot of extra, um, time and effort around, um, COVID-19. In fact, that's what Prime Care says, that they're requesting that, given the gravity of the, of the situation, that, that the county not consider enforcing a reverse per diem on a short-term basis. Um, so this needs more conversation, but, um,
Yeah, I, I, I would agree. More conversations needed, but we'd want to look at.
Yeah, I, I would agree. More conversations needed, but we'd want to look at.
Where we end up with this. There's a potential that, um, we could back.
Where we end up.
To a, uh, a deal with them in a, uh, quicker with this contract. So maybe that's, that's another bargaining chip we could utilize. Okay, so we've got the Prime Care contract. We've got the amount of out of, out of county inmates. And then also potential savings with some of the things a facility is doing in terms of, uh, the staffing there and working with them. So we'll get, we'll look for more information there. Anything, uh, else in terms of reimbursements before we go to the miscellaneous line item?
I'm good.
I'm fine.
We'll go then to the miscellaneous.
Okay, so the miscellaneous, um, 1.5 million compared to 1.7 million last year. Um, the major items in the miscellaneous, we collect PSU impact fees, uh, which are several hundred thousand dollars that run through, um, here. The, um, the Penn State's share of the Motorola maintenance and support, uh, their portion, uh, runs through the, um, they, they reimburse that money back to, uh, 911 and that flows through here. Uh, the largest item that flows through here is the Act 13, uh, funds, the impact, uh, funds from the Marcellus Shale. Uh, we had budgeted $615,000 for, uh, the 20 budget. A portion of that, um, can be used for anything and a portion of that will go towards the, uh, bridges only. So, um, that's what we'll kind of have to see how that comes through. Again, if there was a large change there and that number didn't come in quite as bit, again, it would have impacted us because again, those excess funds that come in, uh, the couple hundred grand, it does come in offsets, um, general fund expenditures or other departments expenditures. So therefore the general fund doesn't have to contribute as much. Um, so far through, uh, March of 20, uh, as compared to March of 19, it's really been consistent, uh, 71 grand collected so far in miscellaneous, uh, revenue compared to 61,000 from, from last year. Looking at this, um, down the road, I think it's going to be fairly consistent. Um, there could be some, some impact there. But again, um, Penn State will get billed for their portion of what that Motorola contract is and Dale knew what that was. So that number's in there. The impact fees, again, that's contractual and based on, uh, the contract that we have with Penn State. So again, those numbers should come through, uh, some of the rental money that we get for, um, for Dale's office, for the tower sites that he has. We also get rental money from the, the Pike Street and the High Street properties that come through. There could be some minimal impact there. But again, the big one will be the Act 13 funds and we don't typically get that money until, uh, summertime, if I remember correctly. Uh, we'll, we'll get that, we'll get that number, uh, from, from them. And it's kind of a crap shoot. It's based on the volume and how, how active they are. So the trend had been in the last couple of years that the, um, the Marcellus shale industry had picked up a little bit. So for, for many, many years, way, way back, it was booming. And we had a lot of revenue come through and then it really dropped off, um, a couple of years prior to me coming into this role. And, uh, started uptick a little bit in the first budget that I did and, uh, really picked up last year in 19. And we were, again, anticipating that. So again, that would be the one, if that, you know, industry's, you know, really slows down, that would impact what we would get there.
Tom, when do we get the, uh, the money for 2020 from that Act 13 fund?
Tip, I'll look back and see, but again, I want to say it's typically, um, July, August-ish, somewhere around there, somewhere in that timeframe.
And do you recall when the, what the time period is? In terms of, is it from, let's say, uh, you know, March of 19, the March of 2020?
I, I don't know. I want to say it's based on a calendar year, but I could be wrong. Um, I could be wrong about that. Um, I would, I could talk with, planning would have more of, of, uh, a pulse on that. I know Sue Hana can work with that a lot in, in the past. So she would be able to give me a little bit more detail as far as that goes. Or somebody in the planning.
Because if it is a calendar year, it wouldn't affect us too much. Uh, it would really be in 2021, we'd, we'd see a reduction in that payment. So.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments as it comes to miscellaneous? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and stop the recording, recording for this.